Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge to the fire of United States of America and to the Republic of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please let the record show that we're all in attendance, save for Mr. Mayor. Is he combating a fire again?
No.
Okay. Vacation, well deserved after what he's been doing. Are there any changes or additions to tonight's agenda? Consent agenda, I can't believe we didn't cover the August thirteenth, or the, excuse me, the July thirtieth minutes the last time.
Well, it was a real quick turnaround there, that's why. Um, I would have not it. I do want to note that on the August thirteenth minutes, that on page seventeen for the adjournment, it should say Council President Mark Rom and not Mayor Scott Callen.
So there's a correction to the August thirteenth council meeting minutes? Any other comments or corrections? I'll undertake a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
As correct.
Oh, with corrections, sorry. Second. There's a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda as corrected. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose your support. All right. Guest presentations, deputy. It's all that matters, you're here.
All right, I want to start with one thing, this month, I'm sorry, this month of August in July, all the vehicle break-ins, you saw, we made it a rest of that. I want to kind of talk about all the stuff that goes into that, in regards to like video surveillance is when we find, oh, this is my microphone. Try to start all over.
And from the top.
Should be honest.
All right. Thank you for your time, see you next month.
All right, so a lot of vehicles broken into in July, and you'll see that again the first part of August, but then that stops in August because we arrested the person we think is responsible for all those. So a lot of work goes into this. Deputies, supervisors, detectives, banks, all the businesses where like stolen cards are used from, getting receipts, and once we get five hours worth of video surveillance from a cash register of just one purchase, we have to go through that, right, and figure out who it was that used the card, usually they have a mask on. So that goes nowhere after all that time, and then we go to the next place to use the card, right? So when you leave valuable stuff in your car, it helps us come up with tips in the future, but takes a ton of work. So I'm going to call him out, his name's Jeremy Betts, he's thirty years old, Albany resident, he's still at the Lynn County Jail. He was charged with over eighteen vehicle break-ins. Charged with two different counts of burglary, also first degree robbery out of Corvallis, looks like he robbed the person at gunpoint with, and took his bike. Three counts of first degree theft, that's anything a thousand dollars or over. Two counts of second degree theft, that's between a hundred and a thousand dollars in charges, and third degree theft, up to a hundred dollars, four counts of criminal mischief and a stolen vehicle. So when we talk about statistics and we look at like percentages, right, in the past, not Millersburg so much, but let's, uh, let's say, let's say SIO, they have something like this happen, right, their crime rate goes up two-hundred-and-twenty-five percent, right, it was one dude that did it. You know?
Yeah. So question for you with all the car break-ins, and maybe you can't answer because of ongoing investigations, but is there any, been any link to the break-ins that we also had at, uh, many back, the home manufacturer?
Yes. Those, yeah, those are all related. Yep, so all the Palm Harbor stuff, Trade Winds, all this stuff, basically on the east side of Old Salem, where you get like the mass vehicle parking lots and stuff, Loves, those are, those are all connected.
Yeah, I was thinking more about when they had all the stoves and everything stolen out, but, uh, the manufactured homes that were ready to go. That was a few months ago, they...
Yeah, so I know Mr. Betts was arrested on the vehicle, all the vehicle break-ins. Yeah. I don't know that we received any, any tips off of those. I know in the report, you'll see just the other day, the new houses being built, somebody went in there, installed all the new appliances, because they moved some new appliances in their refrigerators, washers, or not washer, dishwasher, microwaves, stuff like that, they're just sitting in the new house in boxes, and somebody took ten thousand dollars, looked at the appliances out there, so. I don't know, you know, when we talk about hours, you know, a hundred fifty-three hours contracted for Millersburg, if we were to add the time to all these, the vehicle break-in investigations and the video surveillance and traveling up to like Salem and Woodburn and all the places these cars are being used, I mean, it's, it's probably easy another eighty, maybe? There's just a ton of work that goes into these, not counting like going to grand jury, going to suppression hearings, trials, all that stuff. I'll get off that subject a little bit. Crashes, that was another, another thing, we see this probably the higher thing for all of our contract cities. Millersburg has probably the most crashes that we deal with, I would say ninety percent of them are related to semi-trucks or Loves of, of some sort, that intersection up there. Other than that, there wasn't a whole lot of notable things, I don't believe, unless anybody had a question about anything specific for us.
New codes, is the DHS cross-check, is that a welfare check?
So it can be.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we call them cross-reports, so if we come across something that gives us concern, we've heard the term like mandatory reporter.
Yeah.
Right, if a kid makes a disclosure to a teacher, that teacher notifies law enforcement. Kind of the same thing for law enforcement, if we investigate like a dog complaint and we have some concerns regarding kids in the home, we cross-report that to DHS. Same thing with DHS, if they get an anonymous complaint and do a, a home check and they have criminal concerns, they cross-report that to law enforcement, so we communicate with each other. We probably get a dozen a day, maybe, throughout the county, I would say.
Some reason last month, they, several of them popped out, so.
Schools started.
Yep.
I figured now, explain that. Yeah, school's starting up, and so more adults and different adults are seeing kids that they don't normally see, and so we see a lot pick up during the school year, and then it drops off during the summer, because the kids aren't around babysitters and teachers and stuff like that.
And then were the seven deputies at the dog show this morning, or at the prayer breakfast?
Uh, I think there was twenty, and every year we meet as supervisors throughout the office, and we talk about things, we can make better staffing issues, just looking at procedures and policies that we can make more effective for people. And then to keep our certification, we have to have like continuing ed, in a way, so we had some speakers come in and talk about different, different things, yeah, so. But yeah, smelled like a dog. Had the fairy grounds, it, it was stinky.
Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Deputy spoke to female about parking complaints she made and advised her he could not enforce the parking complaint because the city ordinance contradicts what she was stating.
Okay.
Know anything about that?
What, what page are you at? I can answer it in vague.
Page twenty-three.
I can answer it in vague terms.
For page five, five of your, five of nineteen.
Page five of nineteen. Okay, well, so I don't know about this specific thing, but let's, let's talk in vague terms, okay? A vehicle showed up that you don't like, okay? City code, I believe says seventy-two hours. So we can write a ticket after seventy-two hours, but we can't just walk up there and tell them they need to move it or else, right? So there's time limits to certain things. Yeah, that, that might be something like that. So we, we get a few of those types of calls, just came from one earlier today, so, uh, don't mind the phone calls at all, but we have to, we have to play by the rules, right? So at that point, we can ask them to move their car, but there's nothing we can do to make them move their car, until we can kind of prove that those seventy-two hours have elapsed. The parking stuff is very call-driven. With our level of staffing, we will proactively patrol the cities, looking for crimes and people to arrest to recover and stolen property and stuff. Parking issues, they're so different throughout every city, their ordinances aren't exactly the same, and so those are really issues that we will respond to based on calls. So we won't take every single vehicle parked the wrong way, or we don't, we don't chop tires and start a timer with our call, call load and staffing, we just don't have time for that. So if you call us about a vehicle you're concerned about, we'll look into it, but we would create two-hundred calls a day if we were to pick on vehicles like that, so.
But you will, if you go out on, absolutely, chop the tire.
Yeah. Yeah, if it's, if we believe it's an abandoned vehicle or something like that. Yeah. Yeah. But to be clear, this is why it's really important, and Millersburg does, is to have like strong municipal codes, because state statute, you can park anywhere you want if it has expired registration, you just can't drive it, right? But when you're in city limits, those are different, you have a municipal code that limits parking time and is very, is much more descriptive, so each city, each city's a little different.
I have a question, just, um, this relates more to the jail, are there any, either because of staff shortages or bed shortages, things that would create policy reasons for, are shorter than prescribed, stay for like a property claim, like you're describing a significant risk, but it is, well, there was one robbery, so that might have been classified as a person crime, but anything that you can speak to on that, or is the jail holding people for the full term?
So I'm going to split this up in twice. We're open for business, and if you need to go to jail, you'll go to jail. You also have to remember that a couple of years ago during COVID, Oregon passed a bail, a bail reform law, which you can go to jail, but there's like seventy, over seventy-five different crimes that a bail can't be given to. And so let's say you shoplift from Loves and steal fifty dollars worth of Snickers bars, you'll go to jail, but by law, there can't be a bail established to that. And so then they get released, because what, what are you going to pay if you don't have a bail? Right? Right? So at that point, there would be cited and released based on state statute, not sheriff's office policy. Yeah. We're actually looking at making even more beds, which is a project I don't have a ton of details on, so I don't want to speak to it too much, but it looks like the, the counties receive funds to open a significant amount of female beds. Yeah, which is a population we, we see growing quite a bit. But no, we're open for business, if you need to go to jail, everybody goes to jail. It just, state statute-wise, if you can be held or not, and then obviously judges determine bail amounts, but we take a lot of people to jail that are taken to jail, being charged with a crime that can't have a bail associated with it. You throw a rock through a window, you're going to go to jail, but it's a no-bail crime in Oregon, so they will, but can release you.
What if you throw through twenty windows?
Good call, that'll be probably an enhanced thing, there's a lot that goes into it in the matrix in your criminal history, so if you did it, you probably get out, but if you did it multiple times, you're going to stay the night until you see a judge.
Do you see female beds, was that mean female crimes going up, is it crimes going up?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we arrest a lot of females on warrants, domestic violence-related stuff, fights, drugs is a big shame, yeah. Yeah, so we're trying to expand those houses, because the ones that can be held, if we bring a new one in, we have to make room for her, which means somebody's probably coming out, right? So they're trying to fix that problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sergeant. All right. Appreciate your time.
All right, yep, no problem.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Now is the time for public comment, do we have anyone online that would like to speak this evening?
One person online.
Hi Doug. Anyone in the audience, seeing and hearing none? Close the public comment section. Council member and staff comments, anyone have anything to bring up? I did receive a letter from Meals on Wheels thanking us for our generous donation of a thousand dollars, and I'll pass this around very soon to you, but just a little thank you note from Meals on Wheels to the council and the city.
I have one thing, so just want to thank everybody for, and I know Janelle or whoever's running the slides are going through the slides right now for the city celebration this last weekend, I just want to thank all the city staff, I know you all put a lot of time into the event, I see you all out there this weekend, and then of course, as well as all the volunteers that put the event together, quite a few people out there, it was a pretty good event, so. I appreciate it, it's time, hopefully we can keep the planning committee going and
Was there a good turnout?
That's most of the committee.
Was it a good turnout?
Janelle was jumping in that house earlier.
Right, that's the best part. You know, you'd have asked the committee members, you know, what I expected, I, I heard good feedback from people, it was kind of a, probably a lower key event than maybe in the past at times, but I think people had a good time and hung out. This last picture here.
That's cool.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah, I wish I could have made the movie, I, I do know I did receive feedback, so maybe something that could be brought back to the committees for future events, and I don't know why it lines up this way, but I actually got the comment from a few people at the event, that it would be nice if we could hold this earlier in the summer before kids go back to school. Like I said, I don't know why we do it in September, but there was that feedback from a couple, from a few people, so.
Sheena can jump in, but I do believe the committee was talking about having a meeting for debrief after the celebration, so that would be good feedback for them to hear in that debrief meeting.
That meeting is October second.
Any other comments? City managers report, and we're going to turn it over to Janelle.
All right, well, first thing, before I jump into Transition Parkway, I think most of you have a chance to meet Andrew, but our new city engineer, Andrew, is here tonight with us for just over two weeks. He's filling in for Matt running the electronics in this meeting, so we're really glad that timing worked out. Yeah, and several of these projects I'm going to talk about, he's actually been instrumental in already getting them out, so. Transition Parkway update, you've all probably noticed that the field looks a little different out there, they're moving a lot of dirt, trying to get most of the mass grading for Schedule A done before we start getting rates. We have a weekly construction meeting, we have that Wednesday mornings at nine, so we'll meet with them again tomorrow, we have a little rain coming up tomorrow, we're expecting that. And they're prepared for that, so the big pile you see out there right now is the stripings, with, has vegetation and it can't really be used for the, the main part of the fill, but they do expect that pile to be gone in a couple of weeks.
Are they moving it or are they using it?
Yes. They would like to try to use some of it for topsoil, it's going to need some processing, can't be used under roads, can't really be used to build the burn, but if it's, if it can be, or spec for topsoil, then great, they can use it. I think their plan is to spread it out up there in the park area for now, and. Next, we've got a couple of projects at the park, so we have a little section of sidewalk addition that's going to happen later this week. It'll be concrete, about five feet, well, it'll be five feet wide, it'll make a connection between our paths up around the north area, the shelter, that's the basketball court you see there, and the old east path that goes around the park, we've, it's been brought to our attention a couple of times, the folks with accessibility issues, that there is no paved connection between those two, so it's a little hard to, you know, push your spouse's wheelchair across there to get to the path, and the only other route is around the back, through our maintenance area, which we prefer people not going through there, they don't need to be, so. That's happening later this week, and these dates are a little flexible because of the rain, but it is planned to happen Thursday, Friday. The next project is...
Janelle, can I ask a question, real quick for that one? Does it make more sense to put that connection there, or does it make more sense to somehow come up with more of a sidewalk that goes by the, the, the building there? Because is there a sidewalk that already connects, I'm trying to think, maybe there already is, and...
So, I don't, that's a big point, this building here, so we were talking about, or the shelter?
No, that, yeah, the shelter area, just for picnic area.
Well, this sidewalk does come down from, you know, that's the tennis court, the shelter is right here, that is coming down from that area, we will probably look at adding some additional connections in the future, this was a pretty quick, easy one, and this was the area that had been pointed out by a couple of different people in the park, like it'd be really nice to have one here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Walking path repair, so also on Friday is planned for some pavement repair to the asphalt on the east side, if you've walked out there, you notice there's an area where the tree roots have heaved it pretty significantly, that tree came down in the ice storm, so now we feel like it's worthwhile to actually fix it there, so the northern section of that will actually be dug out and rebuilt, that's where we have the significant even from the roots, and then as you go south, we're going to do an overlay the rest of the way down there till you get to the gate that we used for the celebration, we're going to pave into that gate area, so it's not gravel there, and there are some other tree roots along there, they're pretty minor, so the overlay will just smooth those out. There'll be signage posted at the park, we've had something on our reader board about the closures of the path, again, with the rain we have coming, potentially tomorrow, the contractors are a little nervous about how soft the grass might end up being, it may not be an issue, but they've pushed the, pushed it out toward the end of the week, these were supposed to happen for Wednesday, Thursday originally. I know. We'll stop painting all of those cracks too. Crack sealing, this has been planned for a while, we finally, our, our date is September seventeenth, there was rain predicted that day, so that could change. These are the streets that we plan to do crack sealing on, there's no street closures, this is not disruptive, like floor seal is to people's access. We are also going to crack seal the parking lot at the park and the rest of the walking path that is not getting overlaid. We'll have signs posted at the park, we will close, we'll keep the parking lot closed in the morning and not open the gate till after we're done in the park, and they're going to start in the parking lot because it's fine for traffic to drive on immediately after, it's not going to be okay if we have a bunch of cars parked in there we can't get to places we need to seal. Any questions on that? Wentz Road sidewalk, we're going to try to get that next phase, as is shown on the screen here, completed yet this fall, Andrew put together, pulled everything together and got it out for quotes, and he's been calling contractors, and we think we're going to get some quotes by the end of the week, and hopefully we'll be able to get that piece done before the end of October, kind of like we did last year on the piece that was just completed. Oh, and one more thing before we go to public meetings that... To write down, but we also are trying to get some, I clicked too early, some, the streets restripped.
See what's on the screen?
Matt is very creative.
Yeah. And it's been in my living room.
I should have said this before I went to the slide, but we are trying to do some restriping on our main roads as well, Millersburg Drive, Wentz Road, Alexander, Conter, Fifty-four, Andrew's got some quotes out, we're hoping to get that back soon and get that in, get this year also. Okay, now moving on to this slide, just a reminder that we're switching, we talked about this last month, right, switching to platforms, planning commission October first, and then council October eighth is, the first two meetings we plan to do on the new platform, won't look any different to you here in the room, there'll be a little bit different interface for people joining online. And I'll say for, if anybody's online, if you have any questions or concerns about how to connect, it will all be posted, but call us and we will make sure that you have everything you need.
So September thirtieth, Aspen's gone and...
It's not gone, we still have the tool, it's just, we're going to make the switch over to streaming through YouTube live, live streaming, and the participation, if people want to participate virtually, it'll be through Zoom.
The biggest thing is, they will need to contact us ahead of time, so that's probably the biggest change, they need to let us know if they wish to speak ahead of time, so we can make sure that's allowed, right, that's one of the things we have to do.
Will they have the ability during the meeting to raise their hand?
If they contact us ahead of time, we'll give them the, the password to get into Zoom, and then they can join via Zoom, and yes, they'll have all the same capability they need to have. But if you don't contact us ahead of time, you won't be able to get into the Zoom meeting, you'll only be able to watch the YouTube live. Or after the event.
So the biggest thing is if someone wants to participate, they want to be at home, they want to discuss any item, they need to make sure that they contact us and give the password.
So how are we publicizing this, because the council was criticized a couple of months ago for not being very communicative to the community, so what efforts are we doing to step that up, especially with a significant change where you can't just log in, raise your hand and speak, now you have to register in advance?
It has been posted on the website for, I'd say at least a month, and so, we have been communicating at, at our, the council meetings, and then also it's been our first friend that's on the website.
Was it?
I was not here, it wasn't discussed, shared during the planning commission, because something that people are interested in.
Yeah, yes. It was.
Is that someone's going to permanently be on like the season of page as far as like can we put on council meetings how to, and not only you, but you'll be out here too when the agenda comes up, so I imagine there'll be instructions on here that if you wish to participate and speak, to contact us to be permanent.
And on land use notices, they'll have the instructions on like an upcoming, coming planning commission hearing or something like that, there'll be an updated instruction on how to register.
Thank you. City attorneys report.
All as well.
All right. Fresh business. New business.
All right. So the one new business item we've got is the Jacobs Contract Amendment, so this is for Transition Parkway Support During Construction, so when we contracted with them for the design, it only went up through bidding services and helping us get, get the project contracted. So now we are asking for an amendment to have them support the project throughout construction, this is very typical for how we do these contracting for this kind of support, is that we'll wait in and do the amendment for support during construction after the design is done, it helps us hone in the level of effort a little bit better on what it's going to take for the construction support. So what's included in this is reviewing submittals, responding to RFIs, which are requests for information from the contractor, a lot of project coordination, they are also providing an owner's rep for us onsite three days a week, and we can, for this first phase, we, we had planned this originally, and for the first phase, schedules A and B, we decided stick with that, we'll evaluate after that whether we need that much time of somebody onsite going into schedule C if we get to award that, because Andrew's new here, he can do a lot more of the day-to-day, but at the same time, we didn't want him fully tied up with that project, there's a lot of other stuff that... There's a lot of other stuff that needs to take place right now. Um so, so that's what the contractors were, and then record drawings at the end, which is a typical responsibility of the engineer of record, the engineer who designed it and stamped the drawings. So this request is for the, to authorize the SDC contract amendment for the full project, schedules A, B, and C. But anything associated with schedule C will not take place until we authorize that, because of course, if we don't end up awarding that contract, then um we're not gonna need that support during construction, so. Uh one other thing, just a typical percent of construction cost um with the owner's rep services is about eight percent and that's what I budgeted for way back when we started this project and that's probably where it came in at, so.
So their million one covers all three phases.
Yeah, yes.
If we don't do C.
Then we won't spend the um.
A million one?
Yeah, the.
Okay.
The ma- majority of it, the way it's broken up, this amendment is for the owner's rep services, that's easy to say, this is schedule C, those hours. The rest of it, a lot of submittals and things are for the whole project, right? The water line is the same water line for the whole project, so we're gonna review that submittal in schedule A no matter what. Uh so it's, it's a little harder to separate those things out, but again, it's a time and materials not to exceed project uh budget and so if we don't need hours to be spent. And I also, something I haven't done a great job of reporting back on is but like the design contract, we, we've under run every phase of the design, not spent the whole amount that we contracted. That is allowing us actually to amend, we're just gonna use some of that money that we had in there already and have them um set out our, we have to do some owners um special inspection, we're gonna contract, party inspection of some things. And so we're just gonna be able to do it within that contract and not have to go out for a separate contract directly, which will be nice. To just have that covered in those costs we already planned for.
Any other questions? Attorney, a motion.
A motion that the council approved contract amendment number twenty-one.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the contract amendment number twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Hearing none? All right. I think that was it. Yes, any closing council comments?
Yes, sir, um so after speaking to the attorney, uh there is a possible conflict of interest. If it ever comes up, my son has been hired by Timber Labs, so I just want to put that out there, I don't think there's conflict of interest, he's working down in train, but.
Congratulations.
Me?
He's not on your couch.
Yeah.
Yeah. Congratulations in your fire.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. Meeting's adjourned. Your question. About all those jails.
We ended up at six fifty-eight, I asked that question. And what question?
Jails.